It is now five o'clock, October the 24th, 2017. And I call to order the adjourned regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the City as Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember DeGretti?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
I will have Mayor Pro Tim Jim Cox lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do you want to read the statement before we begin?
Yes, Mayor Garcia. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 54.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments made during public hearings, written communications, or public comment sections of the agenda are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 549, 57.9, and Penal Code Section 403. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the city council, and there are no revisions to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. I do have some cards. Should I call out the cards first, or shall we have our city manager present?
Madam Mayor, is that your discretion? If...I think it might be better for me to go ahead and make the presentation, but it's completely at your discretion tonight.
I prefer for you to make the presentation first, please.
Okay. I will keep it brief. I did suggest to staff today that we put the game up on the screens behind us and we bring in some Dodger Dogs for everybody, but I got told, "No, we can't do that." I apologize. That's what I wanted to do. Carol Lee, I'm sending them to you if they're unhappy about that. But anyway, so staff received direction a couple of weeks ago to put together a workshop so the public could find out more and provide input on Measure K. That's what this is. We included in the agenda item just the basics, the actual question that'll be...that is on the ballot. We included the actual ordinance, as well as the expenditure plan, and we included the impartial analysis by the city attorney. So, not knowing a whole lot about how in-depth the council wanted this presentation, I will be brief, but I will give a little bit of history as to how we got here, and then, of course, exactly what Measure K is and what it does. So, if I could get the IT staff to come to my screen, I do have a few slides to run through to keep me on point, hopefully. So, pop up. Okay. So, Measure K is a half-cent sales tax. It's a half percent. The easy math is that it is 50 cents for every hundred dollars that you spend in Victorville. It is a special tax, meaning that it is...it would go towards a specific purpose. It wouldn't simply go to the city's general fund. It would go specifically only for those purposes that the voters approve, which is specifically police and fire. The estimated revenue from it annually, based on the current year, is about $8.5 million. It does not replace any existing expenditures. Those monies could only be spent on those public safety services as directed by the voters. It does have a separate audit procedure that would be part of the city's annual financial audit to ensure that, in fact, those monies were being spent as the voters prescribed for them to be spent. Specifically, what would it do? It would...and this is actually in the question before the voters, but it would add 15 firefighters/paramedics, would open Fire Station 315, and add a paramedic squad. The way we get to 15, a fire station, in order to open it with full staffing, is three shifts of three people, three firefighters. So, that's nine, and then a paramedic squad is three shifts of two individuals. So, that's how we get to 15. It would require the addition of 10 new police officers, and then it would also...we would use some of the excess funding in the first year to replace some aging fire apparatus that desperately needs that. Looking at how we got here, Victorville's population has grown significantly over the last, I'll say, 20 years or so, 15 to 20 years, 85% since 2001. Since 2001, our total contract cost has gone up by nearly 300%. We estimate that by the time the final negotiated pay raises for our deputies through the Sheriff's Department is implemented next fiscal year, that it will have gone up by about 300%. Over that same time, so how many deputies has that bought us, to put it bluntly, has only gone up about 70% in comparison to the cost. Our public safety, fire, and police contracts have always been a majority of the general fund. They continue to be today, and at this point, it's about 63% of just the general fund. We have other funds that come in for...through the payment of trash fees, water fees, those sorts of things, the airport has funding, but those can't be spent on police or fire or general city services. Those have to be spent only for those things that they're collected for. Between 2009 and 2012, in response to the Great Recession, the city cut about $12 million from the city's budget. The non-safety, general-funded departments were reduced by about 55% during that time in order to preserve public safety. The city council, who was here at the time, just as this one does, valued public safety, and the staff was prevented. In fact, our police chief at the time said it was very difficult coming to budget meetings because he could see all the cuts that were happening, all the layoffs that were happening, and although certainly nobody wanted to eliminate any police positions, they really didn't participate in that because it was the direction of the council to not cut those positions, something that should be applauded. It was...it just made up for some difficult staff meetings, I'll say. We did a study, actually, of public safety, looking at ways to reduce costs in 2013. It was a combination of Victorville, Adelanto, Hesperia, and the town of Apple Valley, studied the police side, and then for the fire side, because Apple Valley has a separate fire district, they did not participate at the time. Essentially, what that study showed was that, just a little bit off the top of my head, the payback, if you will, for forming a new police department for the whole valley didn't really occur until 15 or 16 years later, if not more than that, and the consultants advised that that was so far away that it was really very speculative. Anything outside of five years, it was difficult to really pin down numbers, so it was too speculative, essentially suggesting that the Sheriff's Department costs were roughly the equivalent of what it would be if we formed our own police department, and that was not pursued further. The one-time payback, if there were more of a regional fire department, was shorter than that. I want to say it was four or five years, but there was some savings there, but not a tremendous amount of savings, so that really was never pursued either. Last little box there talks about that $10 million in reserves that were used, as well as cutting the 55% in other general fund departments. The city council made a conscious decision at that point in time to use some of the savings that we had. In fact, I recall making comments that, you know, we had a rainy day fund of about $15 million, and if the rainy day fund, just like I would hope that we all have, some money in savings in case something happens, if you...essentially saying, if it's a rainy day fund, financially speaking, 2009, 10, 11, that was the biggest storm that you were ever going to see. So, if you were ever going to spend your rainy day fund, it was raining on those days. It was a big storm, so...anyway, as a result, the city went down to its reserve floor of about 5%. We've kind of stayed there ever since. We've been very slowly adding police positions. I think we added three this year when you count the school resource officer who's going to be added in the very near future. So, as a result, we haven't been able to replenish those reserves. So, if we get into another rainy day situation, things would be potentially even more dire than they were in 2009, 10. Now, hopefully, we never experience financial times like we did back then, but certainly times will not always be good. So, the path to the ballot. This item was discussed kind of off and on last calendar year, and ultimately, staff was given direction. We brought back an item in January of this year regarding potential annexation to county fire. At that meeting in January, staff was directed to explore alternative tax revenue options, and then ultimately, looking at that at the same time as a service provider, the city council voted to terminate the contract with county fire in...the vote was in February. It's February 15th, not February 2015. The effective date, however, was...is June 30th of 2018. So, that's when our contract with...current contract with county fire will expire and be terminated. The city essentially opted not to extend that. At that point in time, staff was also directed to study alternative options, alternate options for county fire. We brought those back through the use of a consultant in June and made findings and recommendations, and at that point, the council was focused on getting a little bit deeper into the safety, public safety tax measures, options that were available to them. Some of the other options that were presented at that time were sort of left by the wayside, one being different property tax than what is commonly known as FP5. The city staff and consultants studied a different type of property tax, a different type of special benefit assessment as well, and ultimately, as we all know now, the council decided on a, what we call a sales tax, although technically speaking, it's a transactions and use tax of a half a cent. That went to the council for formal placement on the ballot in August of this year, and it is on-year November ballot. So, that is how we got here. Here to provide any information, answer any questions at the council at any time.
Not at this time.
I do have some cards, then I will call out the cards. Mark Crefield is the first one that I have, and then after Mark will be Larry Huber.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia, fellow council members. My name is Mark Crefield. I'm the president, CEO of the Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce, the regional voice of business, representing over 500 businesses in the high desert. Measure K, the proposed Victorville half-cent public sales tax, has gained support from the business community. The Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors voted to support the local transactions and use tax at our recent October 18th meeting. Our board chair, who couldn't be here tonight, Dr. Derek King, citing public safety as an integral component of a healthy business community, also said a user tax is the smart option, and I'm quoting him, "Victorville's easy freeway access and commercial corridor bring in many visitors that increase the need for additional police and fire services. It only makes sense that tourists also help pay for these services." And on a personal note, as a new resident to the City of Victorville, I wholeheartedly support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. After Larry Huber, Terry Caldwell.
Thank you, mayor and council people. I've been a lifetime member of the fire department for 30 years. You know, there's...I took some survey today. Mark Ward, Bill Davis, and myself, if K fails, will pay over $10,000. Isn't that a little ridiculous? I put some signs up for yes on K, and the transits are taking them down, so evidently they're being paid to take the signs down. What's happening with the houses, our new houses are being sprinkled. Why respond to first aid? Let first aid people do that. Is there a law stating that we have to respond to first aid? What is it, 90% is first aid, 10% is fires? There ain't fires much anymore, just the old houses. Let's sprinkle them. We can't afford a paramedic, a fireman, and a policeman in every corner. You're going to run people like me out of town. How far can we go to spend money to support everything? It's just totally upsetting. You know, just to pay people more money is all it's around to. I wish some of my people would make half of what, if Measure K fails or passes, what they get. It's totally ridiculous what's happening out there. We should go back to a volunteer fire station. I mean, we could maybe get something done and be respected instead of tearing signs down or putting signs up. No on K. Thank you.
Thank you. After Terry, it will be Deanne Hudgens.
Mayor Garcia, members of the council staff. Let me begin by saying I am here in support of Measure K. I'm here to say thank you to this council for taking the step of putting this on the ballot so that there's an opportunity for the citizens to speak. Older than most everybody up here on the dais, and I'm probably the only one that remembers when this whole odyssey started. Victorville Incorporated in September of 1962, specifically to control its own destiny. They were tired of being controlled by the elected people in San Bernardino. They wanted to control their own destiny. A few years later, City of Victorville took over the independent Victorville Fire Protection District at the request of the firemen and the concurrence of the voters. We built a very fine fire department. One of the primary motives was self-control again, local control. If we don't fund this police and fire appropriately, we're losing faith with our community. The alternative to Measure K of going to a parcel tax and joining the county, you lose control. Once you make that decision, or if you let that decision occur, the City of Victorville will lose its ability to ever control its own fire protection and perhaps law enforcement in the future. Measure K is the fairest way financially. Why should multi-story, big-box buildings get a free ride at the expense of people like me who own a vacant lot? Why...you know, my vacant lot, if it catches on fire, it isn't going to take much to put it out, nothing on it. A multi-rise hotel or big-box business pays the same rates if we don't have Measure K. It's not fair. And to let an opportunity go by to have people who are transient coming through our community paying sales tax contribute to the cost of the emergency facilities that we provide for wrecks on the freeway and other tragedies that occur, why let that opportunity go by the boards? So, I applaud you for Measure K being on the ballot, and my vote is to support Measure K. Thank you.
Thank you. Deanne Hudgens. And after Deanne, Don Brown.
Good afternoon, evening, Mayor Garcia and the rest of the council. My name is Deanne Hudgens. There have been four generations of the Hudgens family living here in Victorville, beginning in the late 1930s. We support Measure K. We want to, once again, have Victorville be a safe place to live and to raise a family. We want the city to increase fire protection...I'm sorry, we want the city to increase police protection so they can deal with the growing homeless, gang, and release of inmate issues. Measure K is not a yes or no vote. It is an either-or. It is either a half-percent sales tax or a $153 parcel tax. It is either increasing our police by 10 new deputies in addition to the 15 firefighter paramedics, fully staffing the police sta...I'm sorry, the fire station at 315 on Eucalyptus Street, adding a second paramedic squad and replacing the safety apparatus, or a $153 parcel tax that goes to county fire and can be used countywide with no new deputies in Victorville. Also important to note that the $153 parcel tax also includes up to a 3% yearly increase. It's $153 now, but is certain to increase soon without any voter approval, ultimately giving complete control of fire services to county fire, not the city council, including decisions on how to allocate staffing and resources. A couple of other points. You would have to purchase in excess of $30,000 per year in taxable goods in Victorville before you could reach the equivalent of $153. That was what the cost would be if we were to annex to the county fire. Most Victorville residents would never come close to that amount. County fire has no oversight or advisory board like the Orange County Fire Authority. They do whatever they want to with your tax dollars. It is important to keep our tax dollars in the city rather than lining the pockets of San Bernardino Uni...I'm sorry, of the San Bernardino Union while subsidizing fire protection for the county. Passing Measure K will keep the fire service in Victorville and add 10 new additional badly needed police officers in Victorville. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Brown. After Don Brown will be Rob Kurth.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm Don Brown. I am the president of Lean Associates. We are the largest commercial property manager in the high desert with over 3 million square feet of retail, industrial, and office properties under contract. Majority of our properties are located here in the City of Victorville. My own office is just right across the street. I'm here tonight in support of Measure K. Measure K represents an improvement in our quality of life here in Victorville. It provides us with the services that we need, and I can tell you from personal experiences that are lacking. We need more deputies on the street. We need more firemen on the street. We need the other fire station open. I can tell you from a very upfront and personal level, I have seen what has happened when we are understaffed as far as law enforcement is concerned. Our own centers, we have seen be overrun with the homeless problem that we have. We have actually gone to the level of employing armed security at many of our centers now, which I never thought, when I came here 35 years ago, I would ever have to do, but we've had to employ those types of tactics to try and keep our crime and our loitering problems and our vandalism problems under control, and it would be a welcome relief for us to be able to have additional support from our folks at the Sheriff's Department. This is about a quality of life that we need to recapture here in Victorville. I moved here for a reason 35 years ago, to get my family out of an area that was not as desirable, that was wide open, that had opportunities, that was safe. I can tell you, in dealing with many people from outside the area on a regular basis, that image is eroding rapidly for our city. So, I urge any that are here tonight and any that will hear this or watch this, please support Measure K. Thank you.
Thank you. After Rob, it'll be Clayton Moore.
Good evening, council. My name's Rob Kurth. I am a Victorville resident, a business owner, and a Victorville voter. I want to thank you guys for holding this workshop tonight. It's very important. I feel that I am well-informed on the details and the aspects surrounding Measure K, including any alternatives. I am thus in support of Measure K. I've studied the proposed resolution, which is the foundation for Measure K. It is clear that all funds will be restricted to public safety. I'm convinced of that. Measure K gives Victorville more local control with future public safety operations, and it will offer additional law enforcement on our streets, which I believe could not come at a better time. I believe a yes vote is in the best interest of the citizens of Victorville. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, and again, thank you for holding the workshop. I hope some good information comes out of it for everybody tonight. I turned in with my card, a little chart that I organized, that you can take a look at back there. Simple and easy to read. Again, I'm here as a homeowner, and I understand, I've watched the workshops and the debate on this issue that have evolved only since last year, and this decision has long-term consequences for everybody involved here, particularly the residents and the fire service. You had the gentleman from the union come here and speak in about how the personnel is going to be loyal to the county fire department wherever it happens to go, and I would take that to heart. In my chart, though, that I brought for you, if I was presenting Measure K versus annexing to the county, unless there's another option, if Measure K fails, to do the things that Measure K seems to be designed for here, but the sales tax, as described in the ballot measure from 7.75 cents to 8.25 cents, is your 50 cents per hundred dollars, that you need two-thirds of the voters to pass this measure, so I would encourage everybody to get out the vote. Get out the vote. That's why I'm here tonight, is to, you know, urge people to come out and vote. They got the thing in the mail, so it should be easy. What I like about Measure K is that protected fund that's restricted to funding the public safety services in Victorville, particularly that it requires annual review and re-adoption by the city council. And I understand nobody lasts in public office forever, and so this deal of the annexing to the county, however, is permanent, and the 3% rate that the lady described earlier is...goes up every year. It's like $5 every year, adding $5 onto the total every year. From the year 2020, that'd be $163 a year. By the year 2047, that's 30 years out, that'd be $298 a year. So, I'm looking at Measure K with the idea... So I'm looking at Measure K with the idea that it can be annually reviewed and re-adopted and therefore amended, if necessary, to suit the needs of the people. And I also would advise those listening that there's a California Voting Rights Act which has mandated redistricting for many public offices around us. And I suspect that the tide is approaching here too, very soon, and that should be a factor in people's consideration when they think about local control. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here today to ask some questions. As a homeowner here in Victorville, I'm concerned about the additional property tax. And I want to also ask Blanca. From the newspaper article that I read today, said that she was for the annexing with the fire department. Is that correct, Blanca?
Prepared something, and I'll answer that question.
Okay. So I just needed to know what the reasoning was behind that decision, and also I needed to know if the fire department is providing a forum so that we can ask questions to understand their position as well.
Yes.
They are? Are they here tonight?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought the council. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no. The fire department. Are they?
No, they're not here.
Fire union, I'm sorry.
The fire union, yes.
I haven't heard.
You haven't heard of anything? So are they here tonight so that we can ask questions?
I believe there's a gentleman back there.
Do we have a representative from the fire union? Okay, well, if you could just get back to your leader and let them know that I have some questions. And then also, is our supervisor Lovinggood here, or a representative, so we can ask them some questions about where the money's going to go?
I—so, Don.
I think the—you know, I said I was not going to get involved in Victorville matters, but when I read that we were going to get stuck with one or the other, I think that we need to pick the lesser of the two evils. So I don't feel like I have enough information, and I'm not sure if the council is equipped tonight to give us that information on all sides. So it doesn't seem like we have—we're only going to hear—I take it about Measure K. Is that correct? Will anybody be speaking on the alternative?
May I? I have—I have said that I would be available to speak to individuals or groups in regard to our measure that the council is putting for the public vote. And I'd also be available to speak on what I understand to be the special—the fire protection district. The best person to answer that would be our city manager. I know he has received some calls. He has, as the manager, looked into how the system works, how it comes about, and what the restrictions are, what the proposal in front of LAFCO is, and kind of to stop and start again through a lot of discussions. When the city council was determining which way do we go? How do we—how do we provide police and fire? How do we not reduce services? There was a lot of discussion, we'll take it from some other fund. And at that time, the city manager explained that most of the funds for the city are restricted funds. It's only the general funds that are unrestricted, that are available for public safety, police and fire, code enforcement, and several other things. We don't have the option of closing a couple of parks and buying another police officer. So the city manager's recommendation that we had to find a new source of revenue. Considering all the things, it appeared to be more fair, from our perspective, to have the people who use the service pay and lessen the burden on those individuals who just have a vacant lot or a house. It didn't make any sense, but it's not our rules, that if you have a house, you would pay—and the first proposal, by the way, was to annex into the county special district. $153 for that house, $153 for the vacant lot down the street, $153 for Costco. I think it's $153 for the mall, or the majority of the mall. And the city council asked staff to look at a way to disperse the funds a little bit better, and through a lot of discussion, came up with the half-cent sales tax for two major—three major reasons. There are a lot of people who go through this city. We're unique in that we have two-state highways and an interstate. We have a lot of accidents. We have a lot of people who use that. And there's a strong argument that the local resident that's paying $153 would subsidize that rate, or subsidizing it at the present time. And if you put the half-cent sales tax for everyone who shopped here, then if they do have an accident or need the services, at least they have made a contribution to that service. The city decided then to go ahead and go with the half-cent sales tax, and the question was asked during the meeting, well, what happens if it doesn't pass? Initially, the council decided to address that when we get to it. At one point, a council member suggested, well, let's put both on the ballot. But after some discussion, the agreement was, you put two items on the ballot, they're both going to get turned down, which leaves us no options. And Jim Kennedy wrote an op-ed, his opinion, he said it was his opinion, but it was in line with what the council had discussed, that we don't have a lot of options. That if the half-cent sales tax is approved, we have local control, and we have the option of—actually, initially, it was two items. We could contract with another fire agency, or we could start our own fire department. And there wasn't a lot of emphasis on starting the fire department. It's simply an option. Then later, when it—it kind of evolved as it went along, that if it was not approved, then what choice did we have but to go into the county fire? And that was what his op-ed said. It's what the majority of the council agreed was realistic, not meant as a threat, but there was individuals who said, if that are the options, you need to tell us. You need to let us know. We need to know what this is about. Since we are not the Seminole County Fire Protection, and let's say that the half-cent sales tax is approved, the city council has options. The options are renegotiate a contract, short-term, long-term, invite other agencies for contracts, renegotiate a contract, but it's local control, and the city council has control. Under the county's fire protection district, according to the information that we received, the city council loses all local control. We think that's important. It may not be to other people, but—
Can I ask you this? I think that a lot of the distrust for the residents is because when you say local control, what safeguards are being put in place to make sure that the money is only used for public safety?
It's the safeguards that's put in the actual ballot measure itself. There is a provision that the money can only be used for public safety and cannot be lawfully used for any other purpose. It is written into the ballot.
Will there be an oversight committee that is elected from the residents that can help monitor where the money is going?
There has been a suggestion made a couple of times, if there would—if there could be an oversight committee. I can tell you, I'm certainly not opposed to it because it's going to be reviewed annually, but that's not a part of the ballot measure.
But they would—they would oversee it, bring it to the council, and then you would approve the expense?
Well, the oversight committee, some play different roles in different communities. Because this is going to be reviewed by the city council on an annual, it's required, and because it's required to be audited, and because if the city council expends the funds improperly, they will not give us the funds. It's the way it's set up, as a restricted fund.
It's subject to an audit requirement?
Okay, and the—
I'd like me to get more comfortable with that.
Right. And then also, when I was on council, the county would put administrative fees and just throw it on top of that, and we would have to come up with that, and that money is used, and we don't really know how that money is used with—the county. How do you deal with that and still having local control?
I can—I will try to answer that. In regard to county special district, we have no control. It's just the way the law is set up. In regard to this measure, we really believe that because it's specifically enumerated, that we must hire 10 additional police officers. And by the way, that was an important factor on why the council, majority of the council, decided that it should be an item that the public votes on because of the county special district, there are no provisions for police officers.
Angela, if I'm understanding your question correctly, how do we make sure, in the case of the sales tax, that the county doesn't take an administrative?
Yeah. And how they keep just adding that on there, and then when we would try to find out, what was that for? We don't know.
The county has no control over sales tax. Not distributed by the county.
Okay. Well, what I'm saying is, you're going to use it for police, right? And the sheriff's department was putting—do you remember what I'm talking about, Doug?
I know what you're talking about. You're talking about the CalCap. So the county charges approximately, just about just under, 6% administrative overhead charges, over and above what the sheriff charges. Any personnel-related costs, so those 10 new police, county sheriffs, they would be subject to that as well, or the city would be subject to that as well, based on that salary. So a portion of those salaries, that increase in contract, would go to the county as a result. Regarding county fire, their administrative fees are determined differently.
Okay.
There are administrative fees in the contract, but it's not the same provision as CalCap.
Okay. And now, I read in the article this morning that the city sent out informational mailers on Measure K. I didn't receive that as a homeowner. I have renters in there. So obviously, I can't vote on that because I don't live in the city of Victorville, but I'm going to be affected by it. How do you—I—and I know I'm not the only person that—that has renters. So there's a lot of homeowners out there that are going to get bamboozled because they don't have the opportunity to vote on this.
Yeah.
It's just going to happen.
So the only item that's on the ballot, and the only item we're really discussing, obviously, the alternative has been thrown out there, but the only item we're really discussing tonight is the sales tax item. And that's something that everyone paying sales tax in Victorville would pay. The property tax item would be a completely different process. We actually sent informational mailers, just a simple postcard, to 33, almost 34,000 residences in Victorville. Essentially, every residential address that we had got one. So whether you're a voter or not, but if you're not living in Victorville, then you probably didn't see that. You're correct.
Okay. I see. Okay. And I—I was wondering if the city—and I know this is late notice—could have a forum with the fire union, because I would like to see, what is the issue? I mean, why wouldn't they be for that? Because, you know, honestly, I don't want another tax on top of what I'm already paying on my property. So I'm concerned that—I am I missing something? And I just need more information. I was hoping that this workshop was going to encompass the supervisors so that we can ask questions. And another thing is that I know for a lot of these bills that were passed up in Sacramento, I don't think that our county tax is being used up here the way it should be. And I think that to lose that down the hill again, it concerns me, that it's not going to be used the right way. And if we do get a parcel tax, is that just going to go for the rural areas, or is that going to actually affect us in Victorville?
If it were adopted, it would be part of a separate process that would have to come back to the city council at some point. What was proposed back in January was something that I had negotiated with county fire to bring forward to the council for consideration. That tax would be on all parcels within Victorville. Assuming it came back in largely the same format, that would be the case again, although it is—has been mentioned by multiple council members that they see that as the only option should Measure K fail. That's a decision that still has to be made by the council at some point in the future. They have not sort of made that decision prior to the election, so—
So—so basically, and—
Angela, excuse me for a second. I'm waiving the time limit that we have.
Right.
I'm waiving it, only because there is discussion among the council and you.
Right. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor. So continue. So basically, what's going to happen is if Measure K does not pass, the threat is that you're going to pass a property parcel tax. Is that correct? Because you have to—you have to pay for it somehow.
Yeah, I wouldn't call it a threat.
Okay.
Certainly, that's something that more than one council member has said is the next option, the only option they would consider should Measure K fail. But that is a—that decision hasn't been made. That decision is something that would have to come at some point in the future.
But to clarify that a little bit, our decision, if we decide—by the way, it's only been in the last couple of weeks we've started contemplating. That's not going to achieve any savings for maybe a couple of years, and maybe by then we'll be right in the same place we are right now with the county contract. But if we decide to go with the county FP5, our decision is only going to be to annex into that fire district. It won't be a vote of the citizens. It's just a council decision to annex. And what happens when we annex is that then the property tax becomes an assessment on every property owner in that—in that district, so—
Okay. Well, I just want to make it clear. My position is—is that I would rather have the half-cent sales tax than a parcel tax and have other people participate, like you said, travelers, in paying for this. It's the same thing as we do in hotels. It's a bed tax. So that's just my position on it, because I don't want another tax on my parcel. Thank you. Hopefully, we could get a meeting together with everybody, since I have some questions also. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. That was the last card that I had. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? You want to continue the discussion?
Well, the whole idea that we have been talking about is that, how do we get the word to the voters? All understand that an informed electorate is going to make the best decision, and there's a lot of confusion regarding to understanding. A lot of people believe it's both at the same time, and we discussed that initially as a group that was opposed to the half-cent sales tax. No one had stepped up that was for. There is a pact now that is for. Word is getting out. I've received a couple of mailers from both sides. You were pointed out, signs are coming up and coming down. My phone is ringing. I'm trying to be neutral and ask the questions as best as I can. It's difficult at times. But hopefully, people will really understand this. I will state again that Mr. Roberts has said he's available for people who have questions. If it's a question on what the ballot measures, we will make copies for people. If there's a question on what it actually says, we invite them to talk to councilperson who's read this and understands it, or want an informed electorate to make sure we—
You know, one of the things that's—one of the things surprising to me is—is that if Measure K passes, probably the most sensible, easiest decision for us to make is to renew our county contract with county fire. That's probably the decision that makes the most sense. The only real other option we've got is to restart our own fire department, which may or may not make a lot of sense, and maybe continue trying to— or may not make a lot of sense, and, and maybe continue trying to get CalFire interested in entering into a contract with us. But certainly, the most sensible and the easiest decision for us to make is to take those funds and renew the contract with the county, which is why I'm so confused about why the fire union would be opposed to Measure K. It just makes no sense to me, because it's probably the get best guarantee, not guarantee, but it gives us the best option to renew that contract. I, I don't know what the council is going to decide, but Measure K does not undermine the county contract. If anything, it makes it easier, but it gives us so many more options. And one of the things we don't, we haven't talked about much is that in that eight and a half million dollars a year that we think it'll generate, and its estimates, but that's going to also provide two to three million somewhere that we can use as a reserve for future increases in county contracts. So, we have a built-in reserve from Measure K to deal with the continuing increases in future costs of police and fire, but it'll only be there for police and fire cost increases. So, this thing really gives us a tremendous amount of freedom and options and strength to move forward and do the things that are best for the city.
Purpose was to answer questions from the general public, that's why we're here, and I think we've done that, so.
Thank you, Angela, those are the only questions we've gotten.
Yeah, so if I may, if there's, are we in council comments? Because I'm about to give a council comment.
I, I just want.
So, Measure K is directly related to fire services in the city of Victorville. The Daily Press and other council members have painted my images as only for annexation when that's not the case. I'm in favor of all fire county employees retaining their employment. This includes the possibility of negotiating a long-term contract. I am against a tax increase and believe that they adversely affect the poor and those on fixed incomes. This measure was not introduced by me, nor did I vote for it. This appears to be a mechanism to get more funds from taxpayers to get the same level of service that is currently provided and/or available at our disposal. Others at the DIES have argued that there would be a $2 million savings to the current 13.5 cost that is paid to County Fire Services. I think we could probably sustain our fire department at current, at current staffing levels. However, I'd have to research that further. One of the biggest concerns of running our own fire department would be the benefits and the pensions of these new particular city employees. Look, if anyone knew anything about pensions, employees, we know that they aren't cheap, especially ones that save the life, and you don't have to agree with me, but it's true. Measure K is described as a half-cent tax increase, when in reality, it's a half-percent increase. To me, a half-cent is fixed, but a half-percent is not static, and is based on the value of the item. A half-cent is not equal to half a percent because percentages do change. So, this means that the language of using half a cent to half a percent is off for the above-mentioned reasons. A percentage is different from a fixed rate. A half-cent is off, so we should stop using that language and continue to use the percentage figures. Measure K is directly related to the discussion of fire contracts and services. If the city takes over and hires fire staff, what kind of applicants will the city attract? Qualified firefighters? How will the city attract these firefighters? Would it be a better pot of money or a better pension? We know that His Spirit did the annexation because they didn't want the responsibility of employee pensions. Why did the city wait so long to discuss this about its own fire? Why wasn't it discussed beforehand and allow the fire union to walk out if they didn't want that long-term contract? Was it because we were waiting for a vote of the people to reject a tax measure and go get our own fire? Ultimately, the tax is up to the people. The concern is higher taxes, period. We should be managing our funds appropriately and utilizing partnerships to bring services to the city of Victorville at a price that we are willing to pay. And as our city manager had said since February, terminated the contract, that was something that was in play, annexation by this council, it was said, ultimately, we give it to the people, the people vote for it. If the people decide not to vote, we would have to make a difficult decision and probably do this annexation. So, this is the process that I continue to see that we're going. So, it's not like we've all made up our mind, we're still in discussion, and we're hearing what people say, and so I responded to what the Daily Press had said there.
Okay, I think I understand what you were trying to say about the half-cent is, is not fixed, and that you believe that we can maintain the, the current levels. My concern is, is that, you know, I work in Victorville, I own a home in Victorville. It's not safe in Victorville to even go shopping at this point. So, maintaining the current levels, to me, is not adequate, and so we don't need a fixed. We need to be able to, as more people come, more people buy, to be able to keep those levels up and to be able to maintain with the growth. Our population has skyrocketed, and we have not kept up with law enforcement and fire department. Nobody, I don't think the, the council is really considering doing away with County Fire. Like Councilmember Kennedy said, that it would make more sense just to continue the contract with County Fire. They've done a great job, there's no need for that. But I don't think that we need a fixed parcel tax. I think that the more people spend, the more money goes into the fund so that we can elevate the levels of public safety in Victorville. So, that would be my stance, and I know I'm not a voter here, but I do care about Victorville, and, and I do understand governance, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm a conservative, I'm a Republican, and I do not want, and do not support taxes, increases in taxes, but I do believe wholeheartedly that government's number-one job is protection of the people before anything else, before anything else. So, if we have a choice, and two choices, where it's going to be a parcel tax that's fixed, or have people share with the half-cent sales tax, then I would support the half-cent sales tax. It's the lesser of the two evils, and I think it will bring in enough money so that we can continue to elevate the levels of public safety and make Victorville a safer place.
Thank you, Angela. And I thank everyone else, I believe that was all. I do have public comments.
Public comments? Are we done with public comments?
Sure. Madam Mayor, thank you. First of all, welcome to Terry Caldwell and Angela Vias for coming out here today to join us. There is a lot of history when it comes to why we are where we are, and Angela mentioned the population growth, which has doubled since 2000. And if, Doug, Doug and I had talked about this a while ago, if you graph this on a chart, of course, revenues don't keep up with a linear relationship with service demands. And so, what you have is an explosion, that's, there's no other way to say it. Explosion in your population and stress out your public service, I'm sorry, public safety services, among one of the many services that are just trampled on. So, we haven't been able to keep, keep up with all the, the growth. And you see this, when you, when you see a community that does not have sidewalks, does not have proper storm drainage, does not have streetlights, this is what happens. And some people moved up here to get away from it all, and they don't want to pay an extra dollar, no matter what, no matter if they have to put up with muddy streets, you know, periodically, or, or periodic flooding. So, it's, it's a bit difficult, but there's a lot of sensational comments made, and some, I don't think they're intentional, when we talked about termination of contracts. I know that that sounds really bad. I was a contractor. I was on a one-base-year contract with four option years. That means every year in December, I wasn't sure what kind of Christmas it was going to be, to be quite frank with you. And I know that's stressful, but we have a great working relationship, and I hope it's not adversarial with our county services, whether it be police or fire. And so, you know, when I look at my property bill the other day, there's so many items on that tax bill, and, you know, it's, it's one of those things where we are certainly getting the input. This council, been really proud to be part of it, they, as I'm sure other councils have, we, we always seek public input. Unfortunately, people, a lot of times, aren't able to make it, or whatever happens to be the case, which, that's why we're having this here today. So, we appreciate everyone's input, for sure, and there's a lot of decisions still to be made. And so, I'm really looking forward to the outcome of November 7th, but rest assured, a lot of what we talk about, just because we're considering things, I know it means, carries a lot of weight with certain people who would be effective negatively, whether you're on a contract, whether you're a property owner, whether you have multiple properties, and how this, how this is going to play out. So, we appreciate everyone's input, and there'll just be more engagement as we go forward. So, I'm really looking forward to what happens in November 7th. Thank you.
Anyone else? None? At this time, I want to thank each and every one of you for attending and for voicing in favor of Measure K. I don't know if I'm allowed to say that, but I'm just thanking you for that. And Angela, thank you very much. You asked some real interesting questions, and I hope you got some good answers.
Mayor, Mayor Garcia, excuse me, there is the public comment, period, that we need to.
They jump into the, yeah, public comment.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes. I thought that's what we were on. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? No, I don't have any cards.
Yeah, I just want to, Larry Huber, again, I asked a couple of questions, I need to get an answer, and this is a, not a regular council meeting, but do you have to have fire responding to ambulance service? I'd like to have an answer.
I don't have an answer.
I'm sorry, Larry, could you repeat the question?
Do you have to have fire responding to emergency when you got paramedics, or when you got ambulance service?
There are different service options throughout the nation that perform almost like a triage through dispatch. I know that County Fire has talked about exploring that model and perhaps trying to move in that direction.
You know, being an ex-farmer, and you just watch what's happening out there. If you live on Seventh Street and see the fire trucks responding, one time it's a fire truck go first, the ambulance comes second, next time it's the ambulance and the fire truck second. Why do we have to do that?
We have been told by the, by the chief that it's a requirement of state law.
Well, then, find it out.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to at least verify that with our attorney, to find out exactly what the state law is that says that's required.
And sprinkler systems, you know, and all the new homes are being sprinkled. What do you need more firemen for? Give me an answer.
To open the station, 315.
Open, what do you need the station for if, if there's houses are sprinkled? We should think, creative thinking here, we're not doing any creative thinking. You should be in my shoes, where you pay 2,500, $2,500 if this goes to no. How can I stand more and more cost? You threw $86, so I rent a house so you can go look at it and see if it's okay. That costs me $1,000 a year. Where's it going to end, folks? Do some creative thinking here. Thank you.
Probably the answer is to sell 20 houses and buy a single 20-unit apartment building, because that'll only cost you $153 one time.
I'll insure it to my houses, I'll self-insure, I'll save $400 a house. It'll burn down.
We were on public comments. Anyone else? There's someone?
Hi, my name's Mark Simmons. I don't live in the city of Victorville. I did at one time, but I live in Napa Valley. I'm an electrical contractor, electrical engineer, and the comment that she made was downright wrong. A half a percent and a half a cent is the same thing, that's mathematics. Doesn't change unless, unless you build something in there. I mean, I don't understand why you guys are only at a half a percent. I mean, it should be at least 1% because you're going to need more money than you think in the system. Because it's grown, I mean, I deal with it day in, day out, and it's grown big time. So, I mean, I, I would have put like a, a slide ruler, basically, from half percent to one and a half percent, just in case you have to pay for other projects in, in, you know, in the fire and, and the police department on there, because you need a lot more infrastructure, too. That's my comment.
Thank you.
I just wanted to address the comment regarding whether we have, why do we have to have the fire department follow the paramedics, AMR, I guess it is. I'm not an expert, and I think this is why we need to have a meeting with the fire department so we can ask these questions, but from recent situations with family members that we have called the 911 for heart problems and that sort of thing in my family, AMR showed up and the fire department showed up, and the fire department had way better training and a lot better equipment. And so, if I had a choice, I'd want the fire department to come rather than AMR. So, I think, you know, maybe why have AMR if we got the fire department? So, we need to look at it like that, but when it's your family member, you want to have the best trained, and you want to have the best equipment to get your loved one to the hospital. And then plus, you know, even a trip across the street with AMR, it's like $1,500 to $2,000, so I'd rather have the fire department.
Thank you.
As I was sitting out there after I spoke, some of this dialogue made me think, and a couple of questions did come up, and I thank you for that, this is important. About 10 minutes ago, Mr. Kennedy, you started to speak about the historical element of how we got into this position with the renewal of the contract, and I only understand parts of it, that the new, if we entered into a new contract, there would be pretty major increases, whether that's cost of living, union pension increases, am I, am I wrong? Was that what kind of changed the contract to become quite a bit more expensive going forward?
Doug, you can explain that better than I can.
Yeah, in my discussions with the county fire chief, the major difference between the contract that we currently are in, which was a 10-year contract, and any new contract, would be that the city would assume any unfunded liability at the end of the contract for those public pensions. Right now, that's something that the county determines. At the time, we were looking at comparing the county cost versus potentially a bid from CalFire and City Fire, and if the contract itself had an unknown unfunded liability at the end of it, it makes it nearly impossible to determine if that's the best cost option for the city to, to pursue, because we would have no, no control and no say over what that unfunded liability is.
And do we know what, what the projected cost increase for the next renewal would be over and above what we're already paying, approximately?
Not, not at this point, no. Early on, back in January, when it was first discussed, or maybe it was February, the county fire chief came to me and showed me a renewal contract, or, excuse me, essentially next year's contract, the current fiscal year, that had about a $3 million increase. About $2 million of that was for apparatus that's, that's desperately needed, but that was not something that ultimately was implemented, partially because it's still unknown who's going to be providing those services come July 1st. So, we weren't going to, you know, invest a ton of money at that point, not knowing the, the ultimate service provider.
But, yeah, that is what I, what I heard. I heard that our city is approximately maybe $38 million for. for public safety, right, right around there for the budget. And that there would be possibility of a couple million more increase to keep the same services. And so as you were speaking, Mr. Kennedy, I was thinking, okay. So this city is in agreement, possibly with the county, to keep the same level of service, meet those increases, and the city's going to have to do some fancy footwork to come up with those funds. In this case, we're calling it a Measure K proposal. Do some fancy footwork. And why is the city saying no? I'm sorry, the, the county, fire, the unions, whoever it may be. Why are they saying no? Thanks a lot for doing what you can to try to continue to fund this, but we still don't want it. And I know that because I got the mailer at my house that was very, very nasty against Victorville from the county. It was from the Inland Empire Taxpayers Association that had to have been from, why wouldn't they, why wouldn't they be suppo, why wouldn't County Fire be supporting Measure K? Why didn't they be jumping up and down for us?
Well, keep, keep in mind, Rob, we got the difference between the County Fire Department and the fire union. And I, my understanding is the opposition is from the union and I, and I don't know why. This, I, you know, I want to say this in, in, I guess it's sort of a defense of the county. I'm not, I don't have a lot of personal knowledge about the county retirement system. It is not PERS. It's its own retirement system. And from what I'm told, it is, if not fully funded, it's a lot closer to being fully funded than PERS, for example. One of the reasons that it's funded is that it doesn't kick the contribution can down the road. So we get hit with a lot of our increases on an annual basis to cover those benefits. No additional service, no additional firemen. All we're doing is paying for retirement for existing folks. We're faced, and we know this from George, PERS is in a terrible mess and we're looking at some staggering increases to a PERS contribution over the next three or four years. The, the problem is, we don't have a way to print money. We're not like the federal government. We can't sit in the back room. You talk about these, these painful cost increases. We don't have a way to come up with the money.
But it sounds like Measure K is the way. And I would think our contract partners would support that. Whether it be the County Fire, which I totally respect. They've been serving this city for a long time. Or it be the unions or a mishmash of both of them. I, I don't understand why there wouldn't be support. And I guess, I guess that's, we don't know. Angela brought up a good point. I wish the, the union or County Fire representative or our first district supervisor might have been here to, to answer some of that. But the question goes unanswered.
I, only to answer because it's, that's been discussed before. And I'll make this short. Items that you have, except for the police, are directly from the presentation made from County Fire to the council. That's where this wish list came from. Which is why I said I was confident that they would endorse it and we'd have a good chance of getting it passed. I also said I was shocked when they opposed it. It was their proposal. And now they're opposed to it? Ask them. I don't have an answer. And I don't think any of us up here really do. But that's the way it is. Sorry.
And if I may, I also have a couple of comments.
Okay.
So to demystify the notion or the correlation that I've been hearing that local 19, local 935 has anything to do with the taxpayers association, it's been addressed directly to me, that they had nothing to do with that. So I don't know where that correlation comes. If that verbiage comes from any of us, that they're putting the taxpayer, maybe you should look into who Chris Mann is and what his association is, if he has any to the union. I think that would be best. Because sometimes when we come up here, we seem to provide an ambience of who's at fault and why it's at fault. Right now, I don't think we need to be pointing fingers at who this, what. We're not really sitting down with the appropriate people to find out what is really happening. And just like Angela had that question, it was my same question. Why aren't we having a forum where we have police, we have fire? Everybody on the same table, sitting together and asking the same questions, not something that's like this, us versus them. This is not what I envisioned. The second thing is, if my math were that wrong and you were, if you were to be able to describe how it was wrong or how, how I was not clear when I said there's no fix and vix, fix percentages, you would have been able to see that a 10%, when it comes to a large 100 and a small 10% of a small 100, different in percentages. So math isn't that simple and a lot of us may not get it. But fraction, fractions are complex. So even though I said 10% of a whole nation versus 10% of a small city, you can see that that is very distinct when it comes to money or dollars. And then the last thing, I also would challenge those individuals that think fire is no need for our services to do a ride-along. I've done two ride-alongs and I had those same questions. What is a fire good for? Why do we have fire and ambulance? And why do we have three people in here? Why are we spending so much money? And that only came up when I was roaming around Starbucks and people said, you know what? You guys are spending too much on fire. What is that about? And I said, you know what? I never thought about that question. I'm going to figure it out. So I did two ride-alongs. And that was good enough for me to see what it is that they do. And maybe you should do that, too. And then bring your opinions and see why we don't need fire. Thank you.
I think that concludes our meeting. There's no one else that wants to address the council? Meeting is adjourned.